And Holly will call the roll.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieski?
Here.
Engelberger?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Swadley?
Here.
Boersma?
Here.
Johnson?
She's here somewhere.
And Troll is absent in his excuse.
Thanks, Holly. Are there any communications from our older persons this evening? Seeing none, we have one, one super special communication, and that Holly is here tonight. And Holly is our new city clerk. And we did the, the formal oath of office, um, in our office, um, Tuesday when she began, but we're going to, um, do another one, just, just because we can, I guess. So, you could raise your right hand. I, Holly Lick.
I, Holly Lick.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of city clerk.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of city clerk.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, Holly. And we could read it really fast, 'cause she was reading it on her screen as well. She didn't really have to memorize it, by heart. All right, I'm going to, um, request that we move items thirteen and fourteen to before our ordinances under new business this evening. I know that, um, A.J. is here to help us walk through those two items, so if there are no objections, I'll move that before the first reading of our list of ordinances tonight. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and make that change to the agenda. Tonight is a, well, as usual, we have a public comment period. We have one person registered to speak, others may also speak and have three minutes to do so, and Holly will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. So, registered is Duran Bradford, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening. Duran Bradford, um, eight oh four, Berry Street in Stoughton. Um, my voice is going a little bit, it started about three o'clock this afternoon, so I apologize. I'm speaking to the Whitewater project. I know you all are going to be deliberating on that tonight. And first of all, I want to tell you, I'm in favor of it. I happen to think it's a great idea for our city. And I want to commend the work of the Parks and Recreation, uh, for putting that together. I've actually canoed on rapids along the Shenandoah River in Virginia, and, uh, ported my canoe back a mile to rerun the rapids, so I know how much fun that can be, and I think it will definitely be an attraction for both our residents and for people coming into town. But I do have a problem. And my problem is the order in which we're doing things down on the river. And so I think we need to be looking at how we maintain a successful implementation of the entire construction on our riverfront, which is some of our most valuable property and one of the biggest assets we have. So I'd like to suggest that before we go forward with the whitewater, as wonderful and glitzy as it is, that we go back to the business of dealing with the redevelopment issues down on the waterfront, get that site cleared, look and make a decision finally about the building that still stands down there and is creating a public safety issue. We've heard from a lot of the public, I think it's clear what they want. I know there's a historic piece to this, I've worked with historic preservation in Virginia for many years before I moved here. But I just think that right now, we need to get moving on these things, they need to be addressed. We're looking at a new visioning situation, I don't think it's necessary. I went through that charade process, I've gone back on minutes of meetings that occurred, and I've gone back over the history from two thousand and five, it's two thousand and eighteen. I think we need to be doing something and take that plan forward. I'd like to suggest that we look at the product that's already been produced. Go with those things that are already there, a pedestrian way connecting the city downtown to the river. Go with the fact that a riverfront walk is what people want. Pick out the pieces that work. The issues that still seem to be on the table are the density and the financials with the TIF district, with things like that. We can address those, but those are not visioning issues. Those are issues that get worked out between professionals, your city staff, and the elected officials. So I'd just like, tonight, to ask you to take all that into mind, and ju- just put things in a different order. I'm for them. Let's get going. And please, let's have a decision on the highway trailer building, so we can move forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during our public comment period? Thank you.
Hi. Uh, my name is Ingrid West, I live just down the road here from, um, the river, and I was, um, interested in speaking just a little bit about the Whitewater project and about the riverfront development. My background is, I used to work for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for about five years in fisheries and in stream restoration ecology. And I would really like to see, um, a plan that would really address, um, the ecosystems on the river and the riverfront development project. And, you know, if, if you decide to do a whitewater project on it, how that eventually would impact the ecology of the river. And I know that we were going to talk a little bit about, um, doing some borings and some other things on the river, I get nervous speaking, so I apologize. You know, just, just to make sure, because I've, I've done some dam removal projects in the past, and you have to make sure the sediment is clean, and I know that you guys are thinking about that, and, um, but the sediment below the stream would also need to be looked at. And, um, I would really like to see us look at this from a very holistic perspective. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there others that would love to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to our consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight consists of the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen council minutes, resolution nine, two thousand and eighteen, which is a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue operator licenses to various applicants, and their names are listed for you in that resolution in your packet. Entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Boersma, second by Jensen. Would any older person wish to remove an item or make any amendments to the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Old business begins this evening with ordinance one of two thousand and eighteen. This comes from our Public Works Committee, Alderperson Jensen.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Public Works presents, uh, ordinance one, twenty eighteen. Ordinance to amend section ten dash two, construction standards, chapter ten dash twelve, fire detection devices, chapter ten dash thirteen, fire extinguishers, ten dash thirty-one, electric state law adopted, chapter ten, sixty-one, state plumbing code adopted, related to adopt, uh, to adopted building codes, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Jensen.
It's, uh, basically cleaning up, um, making sure that our ordinance has complied with state statutes.
Thank you. Glenn, Director Schill.
Yeah, the principal reference changes are the Department of Safety and Professional Services is a code reference within the administrative code, um, when it was previously considered the, um, the Commerce or the Department of Commerce, so you'll see those references changed to address the change, um, by the, by the legislator.
Thank you. Comments or questions from our older persons? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Ordinance two of two thousand and eighteen comes from our CACP, Community Affairs Council Policy Committee. Alderperson Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Ordinance two dash twenty eighteen, ordinance amending section two dash six seven B two of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the Community Affairs Council Policies Committee Regarding IT Media Services Department, reporting to CACP, which is a Community Affairs Council Policy. And this essentially, we no longer have a cable commission, but we do have an IT Media Services, and so this, um, moves the IT Technology Media Services, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Yep, that's okay, is this your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion by Reeves, second by Jensen. Thank you, Alderperson Reeves.
I got ahead of myself, so I pretty much told you what's, what's going on with that, so it just, um, it's a new position, so it replaces a cable commission within the, um, instead of the, or IT Media Services instead of Cable Commission.
Correct, updating that ordinance in our municipal code.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
Just one question, Lisa, if you would, um, all the members are the same, then?
What do you mean, the members?
I mean, you're changing the title of this commission?
No, CACP hasn't changed, but, um, the IT Media, um, Department is new, and they, so it moves them into, I mean, they had nowhere to report it.
There has not been a, a cable, um, commission for quite some years, though.
Okay, okay.
Right. So it just seemed like a logical place to, you know, for reporting purposes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. New business begins with resolution ten of two thousand and eighteen, comes from our planning commission, Alderperson Engelberger.
I guess I thought we were moving thirteen, fourteen up or not.
Well, I was going to do these two, and then, um, before we go into our, our list of ordinances for first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution ten, two thousand and eighteen, resolution by the City of Stoughton Common Council, approving a certified survey map, CSM, to split the property at ten thirty-five Sunt Lane, City of Stoughton, and I so move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Engelberger, second by Hirsch. Alderperson Engelberger.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. This is just, uh, approving a certified survey map, I'd say, I'd like to have Rodney just maybe touch on it.
This is an, in an existing neighborhood, uh, this is actually one large parcel, it's being split into three. Currently, there is a, a business that's run on this facility and, and will continue as a neighborhood business zone parcel. The existing home is being parceled off into, um, its own parcel, and then it creates one additional single-family building site on lot one, so that's the, the motive behind this split.
Thank you, Rodney. Alderperson O'Connor.
It seems peculiar that there's one business setting amongst all the residential, is that a function of when it was created?
It's a function of history, um, it's a, it's an older, a business that's been in the neighborhood for a, a heating contractor, it preexisted, I think, at the time, even when it was annexed into the city, um, it was annexed as a business into the city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Just had one question, Rodney, that, isn't there access to the park through there someplace, is that where the arrows are there?
Um, off the screen, there is actually access to the park, um, via trail system a couple lots down. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Resolution eleven from two thousand and eighteen comes from our Parks and Rec Committee, also from our Finance Committee, so we'll start with, um, Finance, and then I'll, I'll take it to Parks and Rec. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution, resolution eleven, twenty eighteen, to amend twenty eighteen CIP to include proposal for planning services for the Ahara River Whitewater Park at Bent Park, and authorizing and directing proper city officials to award the recreation, engineering, and planning proposal for planning services for the Ahara River Wa- Whitewater Park at Bent Park. Finance met tonight, voted four to one with the mayor voting to approve, and I so move.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch, we'll let her talk about Parks and Rec, please.
And Dan can come up here, too. This is, um, to do a study about, it's, it's, it came up, um, because we found out we've been looking for a number of ways to fund this whitewater park. We've been looking at a number of different grants and how to go about it strategically. And, um, Dan, through a lot of work and digging, found, and through meeting with a number of, um, high-end people at the DNR, got sort of the go to create this whitewater park, that it wasn't going to meet a lot of obstacles, and so he was looking for other ways to actually fund it, and we looked, we worked with Gary Becker to come up with some ideas, and Dan researched a couple ideas, and then the DNR people that he worked with said the stewardship fund would be a great way to fund it, and that funding might go away next year. So, if we want to get funding for at least half, cover half the cost of not only the trails, the whitewater park, but the building, now is the time to act. And one of the pieces that we need to write that grant is this proposal for planning services, and we, Dan previously had asked this, um, well-known person that has put what, a hundred and fifty parks?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty parks throughout the United States, so he's like the top of the line to give us a bit of what it would take to look at three different options for this whitewater park, and he came up with the twenty-three one. And so, we don't have that in the park development fund, so Dan has worked with Tammy to figure out how best to fund this, and that would be to amend the two thousand and eighteen CIP budget, and that's what we're asking, so we can go forward. This is a piece of the pie that we need to apply for the bigger part of money for, to construct this grant, and so I would highly support that we go with this. Yes, we've heard other people saying that, no, we should wait, but if we wait, we lose. You know, even if we get this grant, we still have two and a half years to put it in, and we can always, you know, if, like Kathleen says, I mean, we need to do some sediment stuff, that can still be done. And if we find out that it's, it's going to not work, we don't have to accept the grant money in the end, if it doesn't work. We need to actually apply for it to have that choice. If we lose it, we lose it for, you know, we might lose it for eternity, because God knows if that money's coming back, so I think we can all plan and work together. The DNR, or the RDA is working on a, a big plan, a visioning sessions, um, next week, that's moving forward, and by the time we find out about this grant, it will all be part of the, the big plan, so I would encourage you guys to support this, and Dan, if you have anything else.
Before we go too much further, we have a, a motion, um, on the resolution, but not a second.
I seconded before.
Did you second, I didn't hear, thank you.
Yeah, before I started talking.
Dan.
I think most of you heard me in the Finance Committee talk about the history, about, you know, our timeline for this, and it wasn't something during the CIP budgeting process back in two thousand and seventeen where it lined up, we didn't know if this was a project we could actually move forward with, because there was concerns with the public trust, public trust doctrine law in, in the state of Wisconsin as far as the navigability concerns of the river. With my meetings recently with the DNR, those concerns have been eased, uh, it's not going to change the navigability of the river, because we did a site walk through, and they realized that the river, the area is very shallow already, and it's not going to, um, affect any, like, motorboat usage, so the, the recreational use of the river and the navigability concerns are still going to be the same, you're still going to be able to canoe and kayak down the river. You know, they're, they're interested in other concerns, you know, water quality and scenic beauty and public access and floodplain things, issues with the project, and, um, you know, the meeting went well, and I addressed all their concerns about that. There was a question earlier about how the ecology of the river is going to be affected by this. If anything, it's going to help the, you know, the river, we have two options, two out of three options include fish passages, it could be built into the whitewater rapids where fish can move up, pass the dam now, and, you know, I met with a DNR biologist about this, and, uh, northern pike are a species of fish that would greatly benefit from this, because, uh, they spawn in marshy areas, and if you're, uh, familiar with the river, the marshes, you know, north of, or, or upstream over the dam is currently, so all those fish will be able to benefit from that. You know, and things like, uh, the flow and the water quality, and that all increases the water quality of the river. Besides that, you know, you know, there's concerns about, um, the sediment, you know, there's something that, you know, we can include in the design process, and I can, we can work with a consultant of, as far as how to include that and move forward with this, but right now, we're sort of in a time crunch, because, um, the engineering is eight to ten weeks to develop, uh, conceptual designs, and it includes a cost estimate as, and part of the proposal, and that's what we really need to move forward to apply for the stewardship fund, if we don't have the cost estimates, we can't apply for it. As far as how strong we, a contender we are with this, you know, um, there's ranking questions, you know, as far as application goes, and, um, me and the DNR representatives, they told me to actually contact the grant specialist, that's all, um, much of a contender they thought the project would be for it, so it's, I took their advice, and, you know, I met with them, and, um, you know, I think we're at a, a point now where I think, you know, I, we have a really good shot at getting the stewardship fund and it cover up the half the cost of the project.
Thank you, Dan. One second, Regina, first I have Alderperson Mieski, who's been waiting, Alderperson Engelberger, and then we'll go back. Alderperson Mieski.
Uh, just wanted to make a correction, the finance was not for, was, was not unanimous, I voted against, and the reason I voted against was, uh, we seem to have a problem with planning, um, we don't have a master plan for the area, it's, like, as I said in, in committee, we have the cart in front of the horse, and, um, don't believe at this point in time that this is a project that should be, uh, looked at until we look at the entire area and how it's put together.
Thank you, just, um, I wanted to clarify that Alderperson O'Connor did report out four to one, one no vote, and that's you, so just like I didn't hear Regina, you didn't hear that one. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I, I don't know totally everything about this plan, but I am supportive of the, uh, the whitewater park, I think we need to make sure that we do it right when we do it, uh, we need to make sure that we, uh, utilize the expertise of the DNR to make sure we're doing things properly that way. I would like to see it expanded from what, uh, from what, what has been talked about, a longer area, maybe even all the way from, uh, Cooper's Causeway, um, you know, maybe in phases or whatever, but I think we need to do it right, if we're going to do it, and I think it's something that would really benefit the, uh, the city of Stoughton as far as attracting people to the, to the city, and, um, I, I just think it's something we need to really take a good look at. I'm supportive of this, um, I guess the only question I would have from the RDA, Regina, maybe, um, I, I don't believe this would in, in any way hinder the, uh, development across the river, would it?
No, actually, it was the RDA that proposed the fish ladder, and the, uh, the parking wrecks dovetailed that whitewater park onto it, so it was part of the RDA kind of plan the last three years, at least, so.
And it's not going to hinder any, any progress of.
No, actually, I think it might be more attractive to some developers to have some action and energy in that area.
Thank you.
Alderperson Hirsch.
Um, Dan, when you met with the DNR, and maybe you can clarify this, they also thought that this plan that you're proposing actually fits into their regional plan for the Ahara River, was that correct, or?
Yeah, so there's, there's, um, the Rock River Water Trail, which connects to the Ahara River Water Trail, so they're working in conjunction with those two plans, and also, uh, part of the scope of the project is to, you know, um, have a trail system along there, and then eventually connect to the Ahara River, um, Trail that Dean County is, so those would both help us in as far as our point scores go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have some issues with this, um, going forward at this point. One of the things I didn't hear is the digging in the soil, which I wanted. I'm very concerned about the soil there, and I think as proprietors of the city, we have our due diligence to find out if this is a site that even should be built on. We are not scientists, and to have the DNR just say, yeah, the wa- water quality is going to improve, that doesn't go into the sediment. We know that this area is, been off-site of, um, an industrial area that has paint and, and some plastics and other things, so I'm really concerned that this is not even a topic of discussion. We, we as city people, before we put any money into any project to make, should make sure that this site is okay. Water is different than sediment, and I would feel horrible if we went forward with money, time, energy, and even got into the system and find out that this site was unhealthy for people, or was not going to be a good site, and I, and one of the other things I'm concerned about is why this wasn't even looked at. The other thing that I have is, I am concerned, as with Tom, is that we don't have an overall plan, I don't know what developers are going to come and want to look, I don't know whether they're going to want that, they're going to have a, want a whitewater rafting and thing like that, so I, I don't think we should assume that that's going to improve the site, but I really believe that we should have our due diligence done and have this, the soil tested, and I, I vote that we table, table this and, and do that.
There's been a motion to table, is there a second? The motion to table fails for lack of a second. Further comments or discussion? Alderperson Boersma.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, um, I, um, have been doing a lot of thinking about this, I actually went to the Finance Committee just now, um, just before this meeting, and, um, my comment and my question to, I had a que, I had a comment, then I had a question to Dan, and that was related to the fact that, um, uh, is this, is, is this premature, or, um, because I, I think we don't have a development, uh, person or, or company or plan in place for that whole area, um, and, and so, um, I, I had heard some comments from Lisa as well about putting a horse, I guess, in the back of the car or in front of it. The, um, the concern that I have is that we are, we, we don't want to rush into things, I think, I think integral to this problem is that we need a developer, we need a vote, we need to, we need to figure out what we're doing with the highway trailer building, and we need to do, we need to do a number of things, uh, before we take on another project, we need, I think we need a decision on that highway trailer building, um, and, uh, I'm glad I can talk to it, because it is on the agenda related to this, an area of this, of this, uh, this city that we need to address. I, I do think we just need, need to make some other decisions first, I am, I was extremely impressed with a consultant that came a couple months ago, three months ago, to present this to us, it's, it sounds like a great idea, it's a moneymaker, but I really do think we need, as a council, to really kind of get, get off it and make, make, make that one serious decision about the highway trailer building, and, and then, how are we going to get a developer back to work with us and, and then handle another issue? And then the final comment that I have is that we're talking about losing, um, potential money to, to be able to, to launch into this project, um, but we also heard that same discussion when we were, when we were talking about, there is some urgency to get, um, movement, movement on that, um, whole development, because otherwise we could potentially lose grant money for that proposal, too, so I'm, I'm just really concerned that we, we may, we, we take the, we, we take the bow by the horns and actually make some, some really concrete decisions about this whole issue of the development, and not just do a piecemeal.
Thank you, Sid. Alderperson Reeves.
I, I would, I would not agree that we want to wait for a developer and ask their opinion about whether, what they think about a water park, that, that, that's not consistent with the message that I feel like we've been, um, our community has directed us to move and to make some decisions, and in my view, I feel like the water park is a great first step, um, I appreciate Alder- I appreciate Alderperson Johnson's, I do agree that we need to have soil testing. I think we need to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and environmentally responsible. But I also think that the RDA and the decisions we make about the highway trailer building can be done. We, we need to be moving and we need to start connecting dots, and I think we have to start somewhere. I don't believe we can continue to table and table and table and study. I feel like we need to move if we feel like this is a good opportunity for our community. And I have had a lot of people tell me that this, they're really excited about this. And young people telling me they're really excited about this, and young families telling me. And if we want to attract more young families, I think we need to move. We need to move out of our chairs and get something done. So I think we need to be mindful of the environmental impact. I think that's important. But I also feel like we should not be waiting for the developer and ask if it's okay. I think we need to make a decision. If we feel like this is good for our community, then that's the decision that we need to move on rather than asking the developer what they think if they're good with it.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson, then Bartlett and Hirsch.
The other thing that I've heard from my constituents is how we're spending money. Right now, we're asked to spend $23,000 without even having a proper study of the soil prior. Last week, it was tear down a building because we had to tear down a building, no plan. The week, we already planned down Milfab because we had to tear down a building because this. We're continually paying consultants attorney fees, studies here and there. We're looking for projects to do. We don't have vision. It's, and I, I really commend this project as going in the right direction, but I am just really adamant that there needs to be a soil study. Because by God, if there isn't, I'm going to find out who can do one, and if it is bad, I am going to let it all over the newspapers. Because I think it's totally irresponsible as a city to even be asking for $23,000 and not even have a frickin' soil study.
Alderperson Bartlett.
I'm going to support this. This hasn't been rushed. We've been working on this with Dan and the Parks and Rec Committee for over a year now. We've been asking all these same questions. We've got a lot of the answers. We don't have them all. That's part of what this additional study will help us with. I'm all for taking soil samples, and if it turns out it's not a place to build, then, then we won't build. But I don't want to lose this grant money that we have an opportunity at. That could be a large savings to our taxpayers if we move forward to this. Dan had provided a number of economic impact analysis from other similar sites that have done this, and it has been a great boon to their revenue in the different cities that did this. So I think it could be a great benefit to the city for attraction, people helping the businesses and building that area down there. I think if we stop everything every time to redo all our plans, we're going to be just a quagmire doing nothing, as we have been on some items. We redid the comp plan last year. We've planned for this area. We've talked to the RDA. It matches their plans, what they're looking at for most of that. So a number of planning items have been done on this. So I, I think it's been well looked at. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Thank you. And I actually, you know, I, I think the soil samples will happen, and I commend you for bringing that up. I mean, I, I thought about that months ago, but that, I think we do need to follow up on that. But I also think that we need to move forward with this. Soil samples, you know, and sediment samples need to be done, but we also need to get our grant application in. Like I said before, if the soil samples come back and we get this, that it's not going to work, we don't have to accept the grant. But we have to get to the point where we have that decision to be made of whether we can accept it or not. And I think we need to move forward with this study. And I, like Matt said it beautifully, this is going to be a great park for our constituents that they've been looking for. People have stopped me on the street. They're excited about this. If we table it again or try to stop it, I think that's, that's not a good thing. I think we can meet everybody's requirement by getting the soil samples and sediment studies done as well as go forward with this. So I would encourage you to all support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would encourage everybody to support this as well. I think it's a no-brainer. I mean, we need to move on this, and, you know, I don't have any doubt that we're going to be doing the studies down the road and the proper things for the environment and everything else, and to make sure that it's viable. And if it isn't, then I won't be voting for it in the future. But I think we need to move forward. This is a great thing for our city. It's going to create some real economic conditions for Stoughton.
Thank you. Alderperson Jensen.
Yes, thank you. Rodney, a question. Would this not require some environmental study anyways?
I can't say for sure.
Just the construction. If we, if we go in, we get felt or come in, there has to be some type of an environmental study because you're working with the waterway.
There's, there's certainly permitting requirements. It'll have to be met with.
Soil tasks, concerns are somewhat addressed with that.
There will have to be testing done.
Okay, so that, that's it. I've also heard from members here that we don't have a plan. I would disagree wholeheartedly that we have a plan. We've had a plan for probably eight years. It's just that this council hasn't done anything with it. We haven't gone forward. We haven't made, we haven't, like Lisa was saying, we just haven't gotten off of the dime and taken a step forward. We need to make some decisions. We need to make some decisions very, very quickly so that we can move forward on this. And then they can probably happen together. I mean, we just are spinning our wheels, and, and it's getting very tiresome.
Thank you. Further comments? Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm going to support this plan, and I agree with pretty much everything that was said, except for the last part. I think this council has done some things. This council purchased the Milfab building. It's now being demolished, which is going to clear the way for this development to begin down there. Everything that we've been doing is going to make this property more marketable for the next developer that comes in there. And I know people are frustrated in the community about the perception that things are moving slowly. These things do take time. It takes money. There's processes that need to go, that we need to go through. Even the Milfab building itself has taken us a year to get to the point where that building's demolished, and there was really no controversy as far as taking that building down. So, you know, I would encourage people to be patient. The RDA is working very hard in order to come up with some recommendations for the council. Our role in this is more the fiduciary role in this process. The RDA has statute, state statute allows them to make some decisions. And when it comes time to authorize decisions, it's up to the council to decide whether or not the money justifies it. We had a couple proposals. We had a proposal for moving out that we discussed, and we decided not to pursue that one. So we made some decisions, right, wrong, or indifferent. We've, we've been doing a lot of work on these issues. We've had many special meetings about these types of things, whether they were commuted the whole, along our council meetings. So for people to say that we're not doing anything, that's just simply not true. There's a lot of good work being done. Would I like to get it done quicker? Absolutely. But these things do take time, and there's processes that need to go through, just like this one here, to get this to us, to a point where we can approve it so we can apply for these grants, has taken the Park and Rec Committee over a year. As we go forward on these projects, I would encourage people to communicate and work together for the common goals to get this stuff done. And it's been pretty divisive, this whole issue of the riverfront development, and it really doesn't need to be that way. I think going forward, if people share some constructive ideas, as a community, we'll be much further ahead.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? We'll vote by roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
No.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Johnson, or Jensen, I'm sorry.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of eight to two. So now we will jump ahead on our agenda just a bit and address Agenda Item Number 13. Resolution 13, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 13 has to do with Resolution 12 of 2018 coming from our Personnel Committee. Alderperson Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel brings forth Resolution 12 of 2018, resolution authorizing the proper city officials to approve the newly created position description for the City of Stoughton Police Department. Personnel Committee approved four to zero on January 3rd, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Mieske, second by Boersma. Alderperson Mieske.
This is a new position, but the money for this position has been in the city budget for a number of years. This position is being created due to some conflicts with manpower usage versus union rules. And so the chief has modified this position description so that to get a more efficient use of personnel. And I will let the chief discuss it more if he'd prefer, or AJ.
I think he did a fine summary. This position is a civilian service employee, so it does not have the requirements of a police officer. And what we've done here is Chief Luck and I have put together a position description that we feel will be able to augment the existing staff and cover some of the other duties that have not been covered within the city. So this position is covering those additional tasks and responsibilities that we've had to push aside and just focus on the main items within the city.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add is if you look through the job description, you can see the duties that we are intending to assign to the position. And I think just keep in mind that a lot of these things aren't being done currently that need to be done or not done on a regular basis that need to be done. So we think that this is a much more efficient way to move forward and to allocate some time to these items so that they get accomplished.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Alderperson O'Connor.
Question I have is, these were things typically done by police officers in the past?
In, in the past, they were, yes. They were done by police officers.
So is there an issue with them saying those are police officer duties and not CSO duties?
We don't believe so. We've been very careful. We've modeled the civilian service position off of other communities that has basically proved the test of time to challenges, and we look at these as all, even though they were performed by police officers prior, they are really non-bargaining unit work.
Okay. Reviewed by the attorney too? Labor attorney?
I'm not sure if we had to review by the attorney or not.
No, we did not.
Again, I mean, we.
We went according to the bargaining language when we put this together.
Correct.
So knowing what is bargaining work and what is not bargaining work. And that's how we came up with the list of duties, and then compared that also to the other cities.
Right, and, and we didn't reinvent the wheel here, and these are positions that are occurring all over in a lot of different departments, several in Dane County alone. And so it, it's not something that we expect any challenge over.
No, it's the, the duties that are less desirable.
It, it is the duties that are less desirable.
I was going to say, we so copied this from the City of Fitchburg that their name was in here several times.
Which has been corrected.
Did take that out. We did take that out. Alderperson Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, I'm on Personnel. We, we talked about this at length the last Personnel meeting. And one of the, one of the questions that I had asked, as I recall, is something about, is this going to be a more efficient use of police officers and is it going to cost us more money or less money? And my understanding is that it probably will be a better use of police officers currently, and then, and we could potentially save money with the position. Is that correct?
That is correct. We, we look at this as much more of an efficiency ratio that we have the police officers available to handle more of the, you know, police-related calls. A lot of the, the items that we have in here, for a lack of a better term, tend to be a lot of go-for-work. And it is not very desirable things for police officers to do, and there are much better things for their, those officers to spend their time on.
And that's how awesome, we, we did send this to Springstead for review, and that's where we came up with the $20 per hour being less than what we pay our entry-level police officer.
Thank you. Are there additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Resolution 13 of 2018 also comes from our Personnel Committee. Alderperson Mieske.
Thank you, Mayor. Personnel brings forth Resolution 13, 2018, resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the hiring of a City of Stoughton Police Department civilian service employee at an hourly rate wage of $20 per hour and at 599 hours per year. Personnel is approved four to zero on January 3rd, and I so move.
So motion by Mieske, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hirsch. Alderperson Mieske.
This is the follow-up to the previous resolution. This is now that we've approved creating the position, we are now going to try to fill it.
And this money is currently in the 2018 budget?
That is correct.
Correct. Comments or questions? Alderperson Jensen.
Just a quick question for the chief. Do you have someone in mind for this?
Not particularly, no. I mean, we'll, we'll open it for competition.
Okay. Just so it'll be open?
Yeah, it'll be open shortly then, if it's approved.
Other comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries as well. Thank you. So we'll back up just a little bit to Agenda Item Nine. Ordinance Three of 2018 comes from our Planning Commission. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance Three, 2018, ordinance approving a general development plan at 565 Kensington Square for a proposed deck expansion, and this is a first reading.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments regarding this ordinance? It'll be back in two weeks for additional comment. Okay, we'll move along to Ordinance Four of 2018, Agenda Item Number 10. Comes from our Planning Commission as well for a first reading. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance Four, 2018, ordinance amending the zoning classification of the property at CSM Lot 1 and 3, 1035 Sunt Lane in the City of Stoughton, from NB, Neighborhood Business, to SR4, Single Family Residence. This is also a first reading.
Thank you. Comments or questions? This will be back in two weeks. Agenda Item 11, Ordinance Five of 2018. This one comes from our Public Works Committee for a first reading. Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance Five, 2018, ordinance amending 10-2, Parent D, Construction Standards, Terrace Trees and Creating City Ordinance, Section 66-904, Parent 13, Terrace Trees, and first reading will be back in two weeks.
Any comments or questions this evening? Alderperson Boersma.
I do have one, Your Honor, and that is, it's really a comment. This came before the tree commission on November 30th, and then it came before Public Works. As I understand it, this is a requirement that we change this ordinance based on the fact that the previous written ordinance language was probably not legal? Or is that right?
I did express some concerns about it in the memo that's included in the packet. That wasn't, I don't believe that was the impetus for the change. I think there was a, there was an effort underway to make some changes to the ordinance in any event, and during the process of working on the ordinance and trying to think through how to structure it, we also identified some concerns with certain approaches that might, that one might take, and, and we rejected those, or at least are recommending rejecting those. And so that's addressed in the memo. Brett's not here, but I'll just mention, I think the committees, did both committees recommend approving this?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's been pretty well-vetted. Happy to answer any questions.
He'll be here in two weeks.
Yep, Brett will be here in a couple, next time to answer questions as well. Okay, Ordinance Six of 2018 is Agenda Item 12 this evening. This comes from our Planning Commission for a first reading. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance Six, 2018, ordinance providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the town of Dunkirk of the City of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin. This is for a first reading, but I would ask the council to. This is for a first reading, but I would ask the council to waive the second reading so we can act on this tonight.
Second.
There's a, a motion to waive the second reading? How do we say that?
Well, this is a motion to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules, thank you.
So I think that's a, is that two-thirds vote?
Yes. So that was a motion by Alder Person Engelberger, second by Alder Person O'Connor. And Holly's got it already. She's such a pro up here. She's, she's got it figured out. So we'll, we'll vote. Did you want to speak to that, Rodney?
I think it'd just be easy to highlight, these are two properties the city already owns. It's related to the balance of the Listel Farm, approximately 55 acres that we bought adjacent to the public works site. And recall the Kirby property. We just closed on that lately, last year. And now we're in, able, we're able to move forward with the annexation of that. And I'm sorry, I can put the graphic on the screen. I'm really not trying to make it move on you, but.
What are you doing?
I'm not doing it. It's in your packet. There's two parcels that are both owned by the city.
Can you point to it really fast?
Move with it.
Right there.
These are both related to the Public Works campus that we're currently out for bids on the project right now.
Thank you, Rodney. So I think first we need to vote on the, on waiving the rules and voting on this this evening. So we need a two-thirds vote on that motion. Did you want to vote on, talk on the two-thirds vote?
I want to, I want to ask a question about the, to Michael Engelberger as to why he's asking for this to be moved up.
Well, as Rodney explained, this is property that's owned by the city. We felt that there wouldn't be any problems with allowing the city to annex a piece of property that the city owns.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we'll vote by roll. And that motion is to waive the rules and vote on Ordinance 6 this evening. Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Aye. Reeves.
Aye.
Mieski. He is left, yep. Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. So then we need to go back and Alder Person Engelberger.
I'd make a motion to approve Ordinance 6, as stated.
So a motion by Engelberger, a second by Hirsch to approve Ordinance 6, 2018. Cut. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by O'Connor. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries. Thank you.